Okay. Good evening and welcome to the August fifteenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I will take attendance at this point. Lee Levy, the chairman, I see Andy Conroy, Steve Ferguson.
Here.
Who else do we have this evening?
Ben and Daniel.
Ben. Is there's Ben and Danielle. And who else do we have from the board?
Well, you got Steve, right? Because we was chatting with him. So you, me, Steve, Danielle, Ben.
Okay. Very good. Let me read the rest of the opening monologue here. For all present, let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to nine P M., we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you have received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk hour for hearing. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will state his or her name for the record and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardship requiring this application. After you or your representative has spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application call. New applications will not normally be heard after nine P M. As the board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay for this portion of tonight's meeting. But should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is recorded video conference and will become a matter of permanent public record. For public comment period, all comments commenters must state their name and address and comments must be on topic. Anyone using threatening hateful or sexually explicit language will be cut off and removed from the meeting will not be allowed to rejoin. The first case to be heard this evening is application two four dash zero seven one eight dash zero one. The Norwalk Country Club Company Shore and Country Club Incorporated. This is an item that is being continued from the July eighteenth hearing. Danielle, if you would read this application.
Sure. Twenty four dash zero seven one eight dash zero one, the Norwalk Country Club Company slash Shore and Country Club Incorporated, variants for number of stories per table four point three point one dash B and section one point two, one point two point B. Two stories proposed maximum one and a half stories allowed for accessory buildings, tennis pro shop and marina dock building. Variants for impervious surface coverage per table four point three point one dash B proposed seventy one point nine percent, existing seventy five percent and allowed twenty five percent. And variants for E V charging station per section four point three point one two point B. Twenty seven required, zero proposed. Zone C D dash one M property located at twenty two twenty Gregory Boulevard District three block seventy three lot two. Request applicant seeks certain variances to make various site improvements to include accessory structures and parking and tennis courts at existing waterfront club. It should be noted that while impervious surface coverage relief is sought, the new regulations prohibit granting of variances for certain requirements, including pervious surface coverage. However, this proposal would reduce the overall existing impervious surface coverage. Background, the Shore and Country Club has operated at two twenty Gregory Boulevard since nineteen thirties. The property is located in the flood zone coastal A E dash one four and A E dash one two. Variances were granted in nineteen ninety nine for the height of a bathroom storage structure and in two thousand sixteen for a rear setback relief for replacing of the bath house. The board granted those variances citing the hardship of the flood elevation. Analysis and findings, the Shore and Country Club is one of a handful of waterfront clubs that exist in the residential zones in Norwalk. The same building standards apply for residential use, even though it is a waterfront, even though the use of the waterfront club is very different. Although this differentiation in use is not a zoning hardship per se, it does factor into the practical difficulty for the development and propose alterations to the site. In addition, please find attached coastal site plan review memo from Amelia Williams, finding that the proposal appears consistent with the coastal area management act and that if the Z B A should grant the variances, the motion should state that the proposal is consistent with CAM goals and policies and will not negatively impact coastal resources. Revision note. The zoning location survey has been revised to indicate existing impervious surface area is seventy five point five with patios and walks. The engineer's site layout plan has been revised to indicate the proposed impervious surface area will be seventy two point four percent.
Thank you, Danielle. I believe the attorney, Ms. Lisatchi is speaking this evening for the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning board of appeals. I hope you're all having a nice summer. Thank you for continuing this hearing from last month. We're ready to present to you tonight. My name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Harmony Torrent Sandak in Tennessee, ten fifty five Washington Boulevard in Stamford, and I represent the Norwalk Country Club Inc. and Shore and Country, the applicant before you. Also present on during tonight's meeting is Melo Kernan of Rogers McCag. They are the architects of the tennis pro shop. Rex Gedney of Gedney Crozier, he is the architect of the Marina Building Edition. Andy Sumalidis, professional engineer with Landtech. Joe Nikaj, who was the general manager of Shore and Country, and I believe Jeff Byington, a member of the board of directors is also present. So if you have any questions for any of them at any time, please feel free to ask. Just by way of housekeeping, since we didn't get this before you last month. The application for variance was submitted in June of this year. Notice of tonight's of the hearing was sent to neighbors in early July by certified mail return receipt requested and regular mail and a packet with the domestic return receipt cards, copies of letters for which the receipt cards had not been received and any certified mailings that were returned were delivered to that packet was delivered to zoning staff last month. In addition, signs were posted on Gregory Boulevard and Sylvester Court in accordance with the new notice regulations to advise neighbors of tonight's of the hearing that was open last month and continued to tonight. In order, for some who may not have been on last month's meeting, the board opened the hearing on the eighteenth but continued it to tonight in order to address a club members' concerns about the accuracy of the zoning location survey and calculations on it. As the memo from staff indicated, the survey was revised and existing coverage calculations have been modified. However, the proposed coverage that we is really unchanged. One other comment that we'd like to just respond to, and that was from Commissioner Conroy. And that was regarding the club concern of a club member about communication with membership regarding this project and the overall master plan. I would like you to be assured that the club leadership has kept members apprised of this project all along. And here's just a brief chronology of what's happened. And hopefully that'll be satisfactory to answer question. The master plan was introduced to the membership at a meeting in November of twenty twenty three and about hundred and twenty members attended. Thereafter, in January of twenty twenty four, the board approved proceeding with phase one of this master plan, which involved hiring consultants, civil engineer and architect to begin developing plans. In February, the board was informed of the status of those plans and moving forward. In April, the president of the club sent a letter to membership addressing that phase one and advising them that the board had agreed to move forward with preparing the drawings and documents to present to the city. In June, the president sent another letter to the membership regarding with an update of phase one and advising them of the need to appear before this board with an application for variances. On July second, another letter was sent to members, giving them the date and time of the originally scheduled hearing. And in and there was also information about a secondary informational meeting that was to be held on July ninth. July ninth, that meeting was held and about sixty members of the club attended and the proposed master plan and specifically the variances that were to be presented were presented to those club members in attendance. Subsequent to your meeting last month, there were two communications sent to club members to advise them of what the reason was for the continuance and also to let them know that if they had any further questions, they could certainly ask a board leadership. And then the club leadership has in fact met with at least one member who voiced various concerns and fielded other club members' questions following that postponement of the hearing. I think that demonstrates that the club leadership has been in communication with the members throughout this process and certainly has abided by all of the club's bylaws and practices respect regarding this project and how it conducts its business. Hopefully that satisfactory, Mr. Conroy, give to a thorough explanation of what the club membership has been told and how.
So the bylaws piece, Liz, is the piece I'm most interested in, and you have stated for the record that they are following the bylaws.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So as the, as Ms. Maldonado's memo indicated, the application is presented to you by Norwalk Country Club Inc. and Shore and Country. Location is two twenty Gregory Boulevard, District three, block seventy three, lot two. The project, the property is zoned C D dash one M residential zone. It was formerly A as an N residence, and it is within the boundary of the coastal area management zone. If either Andy or Mella could screen share the survey, that would be very helpful. And while they're doing that, we'll just give you some information. The property is about eight point four acres. There is a two and a half story fourteen thousand square foot club building on the western side of the property that Andy's circling. And as you know, that has dining space, gathering spaces and other opportunities for club members to gather. It's constructed around nineteen oh eight. There are ten tennis courts. There is a ninety eight slip marina on the east side of the property. And if you'll notice in the middle of that row of boats, there's a rectangular building that's being circled. That's the Marina Building for which a variance is sought in connection with a small addition that we proposed to it. There are, there's freshwater pool, there's kiddie pool and other amenities. And at the southernmost portion of the property, you'll see that L shaped building. That's the bathhouse building that was constructed in nineteen twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and there were variances required in connection with that structure. Little bit more information about the club. It's generally open March through December. High season is June to August as far as staffing is concerned. There are fifteen staff from January to March. It increases to about sixty from March to May. The largest number of staff are about a hundred from June to August, and then it backs down again to about sixty between September and December. So the reason we are here before you tonight is Shore and Country has embarked on a master plan to upgrade and modernize its buildings and its campus, including improving flow throughout the property, renovating and updating some of the buildings and also upgrading the power to the marina on the eastern side of the property. This is the first phase of an overall master plan, and it's specifically related to just the new tennis pro shop that is proposed. And as I said earlier, a small addition of less than a hundred thirty square feet to the tower building all the way on the right, right by the marina. So what is the reason before you? Why do we seek need to seek variances? Twofold, both the tennis pro shop and the Marina Building as proposed are are two stories rather than a story and a half. And I'll have Melo Kernan explain that in more detail. But generally speaking, for the pro shop, the first floor acts as a full story, even though it's just storage. So the pro shop activities and space is on the upper floor, and that is a full floor. So it is a full story. Hence, a two story structure when it is maxed out at a story and a half for an accessory structure. The same is largely true for the Marina Building. That right now is a two story structure and the addition proposed would be to the western side along the back so that three phase power can be brought to that structure. That already is two stories and that I believe is two stories by way of variance from nineteen ninety nine. We also have requested variances in connection with the E V charging stations. State statute now requires ten percent E V charging stations for new construction. And the new construction here is a fifteen hundred square foot pro shop and that hundred and thirty square feet addition to the Marina Building. I'll let Andy Sumalidis explain to you some of the hardships and the just the practicality how difficult that is to have E V charging stations on this property in this zone and to be compliant. So that's the height of the two buildings, the E V charging stations. And last is the coverage. We had asked for coverage variance just in case to be prudent. When the property was zoned A residence, only the structures counted toward coverage, meaning only it would only have been the main clubhouse, the beach house and the existing pro shop. And perhaps some of the outbuildings, and that was clearly less than twenty five percent of lot coverage when the property was owned A residence. Now with the new zoning regulations, not only are the structures counted toward coverage, but so are all of the impervious surface. So all of the parking lots, all of the hardscape, the walkways, all of that counts toward coverage. So by changing the zoning regulations from A residence to the current classification, this property has been made nonconforming as to coverage. We don't don't propose any additions to coverage. In fact, the the proposal seeks to slightly reduce the amount of impervious surface by about three and a half percent. That's a general overview. At this point, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to turn it over to Andy Sumalidis to walk with me. That he would be followed by Melo Kernan, who and Rex Gedney, who can describe to you the two structures that they've designed. And certainly if you have any questions of me or Mr. Sumalidis, Ms. Kernan or Mr. Mr. Gedney, please ask them. We'd be happy to answer them. Andy?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Andy Sumalidis. I'm a professional engineer and principal at Landtech out of Westport. I'll just piggyback off of what Attorney Suchi mentioned here and kind of go through the impetus behind phase one of the whole master plan. It's really a reorganization of what currently exists on site. So we're, we're taking these tennis courts here and lumping them together with these three courts here. So it's a reconstruction of five of these courts and putting all the tennis facilities together. The main driving impetus behind that is to free up parking here closer to the clubhouse. As you could see, there's limited parking now to the main building here of this property. And folks need to park, you know, pretty far away to to access that. So the overall master plan, it's really a reorganization of what currently exists. So jumping to the site plan, you could see here new parking lot here. And then that reorganization of those three courts currently kind of exist in the same general city, and we're adding those two that existed here over in this area. So keeping those tennis tennis facilities together. The great reduction in impervious surface, we're reducing impervious surface by about a quarter acre on this lot. So we're talking about three percent. That's a pretty, a pretty significant decrease in impervious surfaces. And mainly how we got there is partially due to the new regulations as needing to add, you know, the necessary landscape islands, every so so many parking spaces and so on and so forth. So we're adding a lot more greenery to this, you know, heavily dense asphalt northern part of the campus, I would say. Also, as part of this is a big implementation of new stormwater features, predominantly treating all the water quality, all the new impervious surfaces. They do have some, some water treatment that was done, obviously, with the new bath house and some of the other parts of the campus here, but as part of this development, there's going to be a huge upgrade in water quality due to stormwater improvements as part of this project. So that kind of piggybacks on the on the camp stuff that is also kind of before you that was sent also to D E P. And as you saw in the memo stated earlier, received favorable report from D E P. So that's that reduction of impervious surfaces. The second part really is the E V charging stations and the requirement of adding an E V charging station per the new regulations when you're redeveloping a site. This, the this blue line here indicates where the high velocity zone is. Waterward and everything inward within our property is elevation A E twelve. The new regulations require all new structures to be two feet above that. So all electrical components of this E V charging station would need to be two feet above that so that the minimum, the bottom of that E V charging station could be is elevation fourteen. The parking is generally around elevation six throughout the site. So that would put the E V charging station greater than eight feet above the ground elevation, making basically impossible to, you know, unless you're a giant to charge your car. So that's the hardship there. It's really, we're within a flood zone. And you're going to hear a little bit more of that with with the next two presentations as well in terms of the structures, but that's really the hardship of, you know, it's, it's really not feasible to put in, you know, electrical components below base flood. It's really not a safe practice. It's not practical. So we're seeking a variance due to the flood zone. I'll now pass it off to Melo, who will discuss the tennis pro shop, which is in this general vicinity. I'm happy to answer any questions at this point, or we can continue with our presentation.
Before Melo comes on, I do want to make a correction. I had indicated that the sign that is required to be posted was on Gregory Boulevard and Sylvester. It was Gregory Boulevard in Dorland. So I apologize for that error. Okay, Melo, I think you're muted.
My name is Melo Kernan. I'm a principal architect at Rogers McCag, forty four North Main Street in South Norwalk, licensed architect in the state of Connecticut, and I've been the architect working on this project here in the office. As Andy said earlier, the goal here is to replace an existing tennis pro shop that is right here in the across from the entrance into the into the club. The new tenant, this is an outline of the existing tennis pro shop. As Andy said earlier, the grade in this general area is down around elevation six. The base flood elevation for this area is elevation A E twelve. This part of the site is not in a limited wave action area. And per the new zoning regs in the city of Norwalk, a design elevation for new structures is base flood elevation plus two feet. So that means that the new finished floor elevation of this new building needs to be up at elevation fourteen. As I said earlier, the elevation here is going to is existing at elevation six. When we do some new drainage, the intention is to drain towards the center of the site and to raise some of this area up here a few inches and to hopefully get this somewhere around on the sidewalk in front of the building up here elevation eight. And to prevent this feeling like a building that's up on stilts, the design we came up with is to basically come up a half a level onto a landing and then up again further to the viewing deck at the back of the building that is overlooking the existing tennis courts and centered on the existing tennis courts that are here now. There'll be an eight, the existing tennis building is not A D A compliant. So the intention is to make the new building A D A compliant, but having an A D A ramp up to a certain point and then having a small wheelchair FEMA compliant wheelchair lift that will bring people up to the new elevation. The proposed program here is very simple. It is an office for the tennis director at the club who will have from this location a view of all ten tennis courts in their new locations, a small pro shop with an A D A accessible changing room if somebody wants to try on some apparel. And then over here, some restrooms that will be accessible to the members only that will be available all year round. Currently, the members use the restrooms in the in the beach house, but the beach house is winterized, and so those restrooms are closed down after and during the winter. There's an existing shed here right now that is down a grade in this existing shed. There's a large electrical panel. The floor of this shed is somewhere around elevation six point five. The electrical panel services, the parking lot lighting, the tennis court lighting, the pool equipment, as well as the existing tennis building that's here right now. The intention is to move this electric, the electrical panel only occupies the back end of this building and the rest of it is storage, is to move this up to base flood elevation. So have all of the electrical panels accessible from above the base flood elevation. So it's a very simple building. It's twenty feet in this direction. It's seventy eight feet in this direction. We intend to increase a lot of the landscaping around here, screening the lower level of this here and adding some landscaping over here. And we will use the lower area of the underneath the floor of the main tennis building just as some seasonal storage, but that's an unusable space for anything else. The section through the, through the new building is very basic. And this is base flood elevation right here at elevation twelve, base flood elevation plus two right here. So this is where the finished floor elevation needs to be. So that's plus or minus at least eight feet from finished floor to existing grade. By the time we put the floor structure in, there'll probably be a clear head height of about six foot five, six foot six or thereabouts underneath here, which would constitute as the the first floor according to the new zoning regs. The the area above the main bathroom area, the pro shop area, the intention is to just have an eight foot ceiling, nothing more. And then the basic structure for a ceiling and then to go to seven feet under the ridge here so that the attic is just attic. And the also the intention is to use this attic crawl space, if you will, for all mechanicals. So if there's any cooling equipment, heating equipment, conduits, everything will be located up in this area. It'll be accessible from the ceiling below and to have nothing under this area here. The viewing deck, this is indicating that we're aware of the fact that because we're below base flood elevation, when we get to the building permit, we'll be required to put flood vents. So this has not been worked out any more than what is shown right here to show sort of the aesthetic and the intention of the size of the building. Like I said, here, there'll be a planter here to screen this lower section and then the sidewalk and then the parking area. Over here, we have the viewing deck with a forty two inch guardrail. It happens that the forty two inch guardrail coincides with the top of the existing tennis fence that's here right now. So people will be able to stand on this location and view tennis being played on the courts below. Very simple roof structure. The intention is to have it as a very simple wood framed building. I'm keeping with a lot of the buildings in Norwalk. The, just to give you a sense of scale, this is the existing building right now. This is base flood elevation. So you can see that the finished floor of the existing building is well below base flood elevation. This is the existing beach house over here. This is a site section cut through the tennis courts, showing the relationship of the ridge of the proposed new building relative to where the existing beach beach house is right now. So there's nowhere close to the scale. And then the intention is to do just a very simple frame structure. This is where you're standing on the viewing deck, looking out over the tennis courts on this side, which is here. And this is these steps to bring you up to make it less daunting. So it's not a full eight foot, you know, flight of stairs up from grade up to the main level. This shows that the A D A ramp bringing you here to the wheelchair lift that will be in here in this center section here. And then these are the windows for the tennis director so that he can see out over the over the ten tennis courts. And then this is just access in here to the area that's underneath where they can put some, some, you know, nonimportant storage, wheelbarrows, that kind of thing, and then the view of the building. So the idea is to do an asymmetrical roof so that the view from the parking lot is not so high up so that it just feels like it's a lower building and then to have it so that it's safe to walk in through here on this level. And that's pretty much it. We included some photographs of the existing site, just so that you can see. This is that shed I was talking about. It was quite surprising to open it up and see this big electrical panel in here. So we realized we had to handle that somehow. You can see everything got bring up to the existing pro shop is all steps. This is the existing pro shop here, and then the new building will be here and just sort of will be nowhere near as maybe. here and just sort of will be nowhere near as maybe a third of the way up of the the ridge will be the third of the way up of the roof of the of the um, existing bathhouse. So it'll be in this general area right here. So that is the tennis pro shop. Like I said, um, the reason for bringing the finished floor up so high is really because it's a FEMA requirement.
Anyone have any questions of Mela or Andy at this point?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. It's, uh, now if, if you would indulge us, uh, Mr. Gedney, would you come on and walk them, walk the board through the Marina building addition?
I certainly can. Bella, hopefully you can share your screen. Uh, good evening, everyone. Rex Gedney, a principal of Crozier Gedney Architects. Um, we're proposing a very simple addition FEMA compliant to the existing structure that's there. Um, and it's strictly to house new electrical panel equipment. That's all the purpose it's for. The, the, the structure, which is uh, referred to as Twin Peaks is, is simply a, an accessory building for the Marina. It has storage and bathroom facilities up on the upper level. It's currently FEMA compliant in that respect and the addition that we're proposing is considered two-story because it is elevated to meet the second floor of the existing structure. It will have its own separate set of stairs uh, up to the second floor. And that addition again will be housing, uh, I believe there's eight electrical panels inside there which will be replacing and upgrading the existing electrical service to the uh, Marina Dock Facility. And that's as uh, that's as simple as it can be. So you're seeing the floor plan and uh, building plan and then a simple elevation that we have. So you can see the addition to the structure. So it's, it's it's slightly above uh, the existing second floor due to uh, FEMA compliance, but it will be completely FEMA compliant in that respect. Uh, we have to make a modification to the existing roof. It'll no longer be a twin peak, but uh, it's, it's still a very basic structure. Happy to answer any questions.
I missed the ADA piece.
Uh, it's not ADA compliant. It's not required to be as a, it's simple. It's a mechanical storage room. It's a mechanical room for electrical equipment. And it's not uh, ADA compliant in that respect.
And where are the bathrooms located?
The bathrooms are located, if you uh, maybe go back to the plan, Mela, thank you. So the bathrooms are located on the second floor plan. There are two, there's a men's and ladies bathrooms there.
And those aren't ADA compliant?
Those are not ADA compliant. There are ADA compliant facilities at the club if they need to be, uh, but these are not. And when they were built, they were not. The structure was built quite some time ago.
That concludes our presentation to you. Uh, we, we're happy to answer questions. If you'd like to hear from General Manager, Mr. Nikaj or from Mr. Bynton, they're available, but we don't have anything further to present to you. The rationale, the proposal, the hardships um, have been already described by Ms. Kernan, Mr. Gedney and Mr. Summelys myself. But should you have anything else of us? We're, we're here. We're certainly happy to.
Let me first ask, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak in favor of this application?
So attendees, if you'd like to speak in favor, you just rate, press the raise your hand feature. No one's raising their hand for in favor.
Okay, do we have anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this application?
Okay, once again, this is your opportunity. Use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to speak. We have no raised hands, but we did have the uh, letter that we did not read into the record when we opened the public hearing last uh.
Yes. I've got that in front of me. Uh, Danielle, would you read the letter into the uh, the record? From Alan, Alan Kibbe.
Yeah, the one that calls out the method of. All right, hold on.
I've got it in front of me if we need it.
I got it. All right. Eighteenth July, twenty twenty-four, Dear Zoning Board of Appeals. With regard to the overall layout of the property shown in this drawing set, these changes have not been shown in detail to our membership before the submittal and are not approved by the club membership. As a club member, I don't believe that the permeable surfaces of the property represent seventy-five percent of the property area. The club has just installed a non-permeable flagstone terrace construction on the west side of the property, not noted on the site plan, and recently doubled the brick paved terrace on grade to the west of the beach house, not reflected in the plans. Hartrue tennis courts, of which the club currently has ten, are considered semi-permeable for the purpose of making these calculations for obvious reasons. The plans before us show eight semi-permeable courts and two new asphalt impermeable courts. Two courts changing from hartrue to asphalt is a significant increase in impermeable surface above what presently exists. I don't believe that the permeability of the court areas have been calculated correctly. Alan Kibbe.
Hey, Danielle, thank you. Uh, does any board member have any questions of this applicant? Yeah, the, the census letters existed for a month. Did um, whether the GM or somebody representing the board or the attorney have a discussion with the writer of the letter?
Mr. Conrad, yes. As a matter of fact, um, there has, there was a discussion with Mr. Kibbe um, with uh, the board president and with Ms., with the general manager. And um, I believe that the questions, issues, concerns were addressed. Mr. Kibbe is on tonight uh, as an attendee. Um, so if, if he has any question, further questions or comments, I'm sure he can share them. But yes, there were direct conversations with Mr. Kibbe to address his concerns and answer his questions. And I believe those were all successfully um, handled this week.
All right, thanks.
One other thing I might want to mention to the board is this application, uh, this proposal would be going before the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a coastal site plan that was submitted along with a request to modify an underlying special permit. So there is another set of eyes that will come upon this app, this proposal, this first phase of the master plan. And it's um, my understanding that that may take place as early as next week. Uh, just wanted you to be aware that the, there are other agencies that are responsible for review and there are other municipal departments, including Public Works, Water Pollution Control, Fire, Water, Transportation Mobility and Parking, that also have review um, authority over this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Sachi. Um, I'm hearing no further input or further questions from the board.
I, I have some questions.
Oh, Danielle, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, so all of the new paving and the new courts are impervious surfaces. Was there a calculation done or was uh, permeable surfaces considered for the new parking areas and the new tennis courts? And if so, what would that calculation come out to be? In terms of percentage coverage?
Mr. Summelys, can you answer that?
Sure. Um, in terms of the tennis court materials?
Uh, and, and yeah, and the new parking.
Sure. Um, so for, in terms of um, the tennis courts, um, we took all the existing and proposed as impervious. Um, hartrue is, you know, it's not really a permeable material. I think it runs off. Um, so all those courts existing and proposed, it's really a net, net, net in that aspect. Um, in terms of the pavement, where, where we tried to reduce with impervious, we did with landscaping versus, you know, porous asphalt and pavers and the such. Um, we have designed, you know, other sites with, with pavers and porous asphalt. We're not a big proponent of it, honestly, due to a maintenance issue with that. Um, they do clog easily. It's, you know, you have to vacuum it. It's, it becomes a real maintenance nightmare, I would say, some porous asphalt. So what, how we mimics, uh, how we alleviated that was honestly adding green space um, to reduce. So we reduced um, impervious surfaces by um, I want to say it was a quarter acre. Um, when you're looking at it in the overall grand scheme of things. Um, and then what we also did was implement a, uh, we didn't really present it thoroughly here, uh, was a very robust um, stormwater management plan. Um, a lot of impervious surfaces now go um, go untreated, I would say, right into Long Island town. We are capturing all this new impervious surface. We're detaining it. We're infiltrating it. We're treating it. Um, so we're doing a lot of that with our new proposal.
So net, net, you're telling us you reduced your impervious service, surfaces?
Correct, by over ten thousand square feet. Which is, you know, replacing basically asphalt with landscaped areas with lawn or plantings.
And did you consider any of the permeable tennis court options?
Um, I defer that to either Mela or Joe, if you want to answer the tennis in general. Um, I don't know if that, you know, from a tennis perspective, um, what, what the materials were considered there.
We have somebody that's gonna.
Alan, can you answer that, please?
Um, but I'm going to defer to Jeff Bynton, who's the board member here.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Bynton. I'm, I'm Chair of the Future Planning Committee. Um, in proposing the, the new or moving the courts and consolidating the courts, um, the intention is to create a, a surface for pickleball, which is a sport that's growing. So the surface considered there is, is a hard court surface that will also double as a tennis court. So we'll be able to um, meet the needs of members who are interested in pickleball, as I think everybody knows that sport is growing. Um, so um, you know, that, that's the surface that is the, you know, the ideal surface for that, you know, that type of application, so.
Okay, I, I have seen products out there that, you know, aim to create sports courts for both tennis and pickleball that uh, you know, do meet some permeable. Uh, they have permeable capacities. You know, how they perform, I don't know, but there are definitely products out there in the marketplace that, that aim to address some of these issues.
Yeah, I understand. Um, I think current, some of those surfaces, which are almost like a synthetic, one of the issues we have with trying to um, utilize existing hartrue courts for pickleball is that the ball, the, the court is a soft court, the ball doesn't bounce, so it's actually just not functional. Um, we've been doing that for the last two years. Members have adapted the hartrue court for that, but that is not something that is, you know, ideal or even functional, to be honest. So um, that sport kind of requires a, a certain amount of, you know, um, the surface has to be hard enough to be able to um, allow that ball, which is not a, a ball that generally bounces. So it's more like a wiffle ball. So I think it's about the functionality. Um, I think looking at all the the new pickleball facilities, including in South Norwalk and some proposed in, in Stanford and down the road actually at the park, uh, you know, at Marvin Beach. Um, it, it's generally played on that hard asphalt surface.
That, that's two of the courts will be that. The other age will stay as the hartrue surface that they are right now.
Correct.
Do we have any further questions? Sachi, do you have any final comments?
No, Mr. Chairman. Um, I appreciate the time that you spent tonight and again, your indulgence for continuing the hearing. But uh, we've made our case. We've presented to you what we believe are these significant difficulties, hardships and challenges for both the height of the structures, the EV charging stations and also the reduction in the uh, impervious surface. We look forward to your discussion and your action this evening.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close this item. And we will move on to item two four dash zero eight one five dash zero one, Lawrence M. Lozio.
That's me.
Hold on, hold on, please.
Okay.
Uh, Danielle, if you would read the application?
Yep. Two four dash zero eight one five dash zero one, Lawrence M. Lozio, variance of front setback for her table four point three point one point A, forty feet required, twenty-seven feet existing and proposed for AC unit at single-family residence, Zone CD one L. Property located at three forty-two Chestnut Hill Road, District Five, Block Thirty-One, Lot Thirty-Three. Request, applicant requests variance for the location of an installed AC unit. Background, the existing single-family dwelling was built in nineteen, in seventeen ninety-six. This home is a historic structure listed on the local Norwalk inventory. The former zone was triple A. Under old and new zoning regulations, the required front setback is forty feet. Analysis and findings. The construction of the home predates zoning regulations. The majority of the dwelling is located in the front setback. The project was referred to Todd Byron for historical, for historic impact opinion. Todd's letter is attached here and was included with the ZBA application materials. He finds the AC unit as installed causes no harm to the historic home. Due to site conditions and the age of the structure, there does appear to be a practical difficulty in relocating the AC unit behind the front setback. And then I will, I can read Todd's letter.
Yes, let's read that into the record.
Uh, to the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, variance requested for heat pump AC condenser at three forty-two Chestnut Hill Road. I'm writing regarding the variance requested by Mr. Larry Lozio, who is the owner of a home located at three forty-two Chestnut Hill Road that is listed in Norwalk's Historic Resource Inventory as having been built circa seventeen ninety-seven. The request, the requested variance would allow Mr. Lozio to retain a previously installed heat pump AC condenser on the south side of his home at a location that falls within the property's forty foot front setback. It is regrettable that the company that installed the condenser did so without having an approved building permit and without Mr. Lozio's knowledge of the violation. I have visited the site and inspected the insulation in the context of the house and the grounds. As a result of this visit, I believe that the insulation of the heat pump AC condenser in the existing location does not affect the historic or architectural integrity of this eighteenth century home. The unit is not visible from the street and it does not damage any visible historic architectural element of the house. The insulation of this unit is reversible. If it were to be removed in the future, only minimal repairs to a small area near the foundation of the house would be required to return it to its original appearance. However, if the unit were to be relocated now, the existing damage to the house, minimal as it is, two holes, three inches and one and a half inches would have to be repaired and two more holes would be drilled through the sill and bottom course of shingles at another location. This would double the impact on the home's original materials for what would seem to be little gain. It is my professional opinion that this unit as installed causes no harm to this historic home. My CV is attached respectfully. Todd Byron.
Very good. Danielle, thank you. Mr. Lozio, if you would like to proceed with your patient.
Great. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Larry Losio. For the record, my first name is Lawrence, middle initial M. Uh, I am the owner and resident of three forty-two Chestnut Hill Road and have been such since nineteen ninety-eight. I believe so for twenty-six years. Um, I am now gonna go. I'm going to attempt to put myself in share mode. Okay, um, is a chart that has a heading of Norwalk Zoning Board of Appeals uh, visible to all members of the board?
No, all we're getting is photographs. Photo.
We're seeing, we're seeing the small representations of the various images.
The icons. Okay, so let's try this. CBA.
Yep.
Now you see it. Okay, great. I apologize. This is the first time I've ever used the sharing function of Zoom. Okay, so um, as already read into the into the record, um, my house was built in seventeen ninety-six or ninety, uh, seventeen ninety-seven. And thus has the status of uh being legal non-conforming. Um, to the point made in the memo to uh the board members, uh, the greater amount of the living area of the house is within the forty foot uh setback. I actually did a calculation and and specifically to the best I'm able to calculate uh, ninety plus percent of the living area of the original footprint of the house is within the forty foot setback. And uh, the the um, the footprint of the house as it currently exists, because I believe the the addition that exists was constructed somewhere in the nineteen forties. When you add it all together, I estimate that seventy plus percent of the uh living area is within the forty foot setback. As already mentioned, the house is included in Norwalk's Historic Resource Inventory Effect, which I was able to uh confirm with Todd. The variance I'm requesting as also uh referenced already is to allow uh the insulation uh, of a proposed and existing heat pump uh at twenty-seven feet from the uh, front boundary of the property uh at the south side of the house. Uh, before actually sharing the materials um that I've prepared for you, I'd I'd like to make two comments. The and the first is, I'd like to thank uh Tammy and then also Jayla in in uh uh, in this in zoning uh in planning and zoning, because for someone who isn't an architect, an attorney, a a a building professional uh uh, and has little familiarity with this process, it it is daunting. And they very much put a human face uh on on the process for me. And the second thing I I want to do is is apologize specifically for the fact that this is not just a proposed uh heat pump AC, that it is proposed and existing. And uh as Todd mentioned in his letter, uh, on, you know, unfortunately, the contractor that did the work who was responsible for obtaining building permits, um, did not have the approved building permit back at the time that he uh began the work. And it was only some ten days after the work was completed that he called saying, oh, um we have a problem. So for that, I can only apologize. Um, and um with 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 that said, uh, what I uh plan to do over the next uh number of minutes is uh, first of all, uh, review the property and the proposed actual heat pump AC condenser location. Uh, then address the challenges, unique site thing, uh, features, practical difficulties and hardship hardships. Vis a vis the uh existing condenser location. Uh, shares uh some photos with you that uh most of which were part of the application package that um hopefully you all have in hand. The letter from Todd Bryant, we don't need to address because it's already been read into record. And then lastly, uh, I do have uh four letters of support from neighbors relative to this application. And of course, if um stop me and redirect me at at uh at your pleasure. So, um, this is a a blown up image of uh of my home uh taken from the uh survey that was included with the application. And as you can see, um, the proposed actual location for the AC uh, heat pump AC condenser is right here, right beneath uh my cursor. Um, and uh it is behind a bay window uh that you can see extending from the main side of the house. So even if there weren't a row of evergreen arborvitae uh across the front of the house and uh and an evergreen holly here and vegetation pretty much along the entire frontage of the house from from uh this point down. Uh, it it would not be uh visible, uh, easel, well, easily viewed because of the bay window. Um, I've also included uh, an aerial photo in the package and and that'll serve two purposes. Um, those purposes, um, to hopefully uh to to show that the footprint of the house has not changed since the time of of the uh of the survey. And secondarily, I'd like to use it as I talk to some of the uh specific uh site challenges. Uh, since it it allows clearer view of some of the unique features of the property.
You blow that up a little bit?
Um, I can certainly try.
Okay, thanks.
And then let me center it. Whoops.
Wrong way. There you go. Too ambitious.
I know. I've developed a bit of a tremor in my right hand with age, which is
So do I. Um, you're doing real good.
It's annoying. So, um, so as 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 you can see, um the the entrance, the entrance to the property um is through this driveway, which is at about a fifteen degree um incline up to this point, uh, up to this point around here, and then it levels out. Um, and and then uh entrance to the house is obtained either through uh front walkway, which has multiple sets of stairs or through a a a rear uh path. Um the uh but without, rather than comment on the uh on the features of the house yet. What I'd like to do is is just quickly show you as well this screenshot from Google Maps and um, this uh s- this uh has the advantage of clearly showing where the uh driveways for the back lots are to the north of my property, uh, which allow access to um, this home and this home. And then there are two uh driveways side by side. Uh, well, to the south of my property that allow access to this home. Uh, uh, and this home and this home. And the other nine properties um include them, included amongst the sixteen that I needed to notify um of of uh this hearing and application are located across the street in a conservation development that was constructed in two thousand seventeen. As far as the specific challenges, unique site features, practical difficulties and hardships, um my, the overarching challenge from my perspective, and I and I have to apologize here again because I know that um uh, I'm supposed to focus on strictly uh zoning hardships, but this overarching challenge bleeds a little into a into a personal uh challenge for me, and I apologize for that. And it's very difficult for me to parse them and separate them. But um what what I've been trying to do and 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 the three contractors that I brought in to consult um, be- before undertaking the heat pump AC um uh, installation, wha- uh, what we were trying to solve was how can I not only i- install air conditioning in my home but also uh arrange to get uh a generator and propane tanks installed on the property as well? Uh, I'm at that point uh in my life where I need to figure out whether it's possible for me to age in place in this home, you know, and I've lived here twenty-five years. It's my second uh antique home in Norwalk. Uh, I love the home despite its challenges. But uh, I I did have the experience in twenty twenty of dislocating my uh prosthetic hip uh, in the middle uh, in the, I think it was the third or fourth day of a eight day um electrical outage i- in the aftermath of uh Tropical Storm Isaias. And my basement flooded when the some pump battery went dead. And I attempted to deal with it and dislocated my left hip on the Bilco uh, on the stairs leading into the basement. Uh, you'll see photos of that. And uh, it was an agonizing experience and and in turn it it aggravated uh uh, back issues such that I now have three surgeons telling me that I urgently have to uh undertake uh uh back surgery, which is one of the reasons why I need the uh, I needed to install the central air because I can no longer lift uh uh, you know, window air conditioners and install them and uninstall them as I have the past twenty-five years. So from my perspective, and I I know it's personal, but I was really trying to solve uh, for two problems. And to do so within the constraints of 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 an old property, uh, which by its very nature, almost always comes with challenges. And any of you, tho- those of you who are familiar with older properties, uh, know know that to be the case. So the first site feature that I'll call out that needed to be worked around is is the is the septic system and I'll I'll scroll north, uh, I'll scroll up to um, to this chart to to uh, show that the the septic system, which is um a tank located about here and then uh six infiltrators in this entire area here, uh, that will, that um, that uh system was installed, I believe in nineteen ninety, but it is, it is um a system that needs to be uh protected because God knows if it failed, I don't know uh, where in the world I would uh ever be able to uh install another um, an alternative. Uh, the other uh in uh challenging feature on that side of the property uh, is an extremely large eastern white pine. And when I show you the photos, you'll un- you'll understand how large it is. It's it's uh, its diameter at the base is actually between four and a half and five feet long. Uh, uh, which is an immense diameter for an eastern white pine. Uh, the largest eastern white pine ever recorded has a diameter of five foot four inches. So I'm I'm um I I hope I live long enough to see it achieve, it it achieve that objective. But that that eastern white pine and its root system quite import- uh importantly, uh, are right there, right? And and the root system uh extends uh, not just in this direction, you know, in and and in fact, it it surfaces at multiple places in this area of my lawn. But the root system also extends in this direction and out in this direction. And in fact, there's a part of the root system that's actually in this small crawl space beneath beneath a shed bump of the house. Um, so uh, the that that root system, and oh, by the way, preserving that tree are are important to me. Um, I spent ten thousand dollars in uh early of last year uh, topping the tree, which had reached uh north of a hundred and thirty feet because there was a leader leaning toward the house. And while uh most tree folks, uh, Arbor said, well, the the mo- the prudent thing to do is just to take it down. I really didn't want to do that. So Almstead Tree fortunately understood the predicament and they they just took down that top um, seventy or eighty feet. Uh, but uh, clearly, my priority is with preserving that tree uh at all, if at all possible, and not doing any damage to the root system uh, vis a vis excavation.
Can I stop there for a second?
Yeah, certainly.
Maybe getting more information than I need. Um, one of the things that isn't clear to me is what location you originally chose, since the contractor put it somewhere that you thought was not appropriate.
Oh, no, no, no.
Or how did the contractor choose the location?
Well, it it's, it's not, well. So Andy, the beginning of of the question threw me, and I apologize, I'm sort of mid migraine. So the uh the, with all of the contractors, we discussed through all options, right? And what we concluded was with a certainty, was that that a a generator and propane tanks certainly couldn't go on the south side of the property. Right? Because of all the, all of the issues that I just mentioned, there's no way. Uh, and and now, of course, we're more keenly aware of the forty foot setback that that wasn't on any of the three contractors radar screen uh uh screens. And I think just speculating, it's because as one of them said, we focus on side setbacks. You know, most of the homes, the greater majority of the homes we look at are are conforming homes and they conform with the front setback. So we just sort of assume that if the set of side setback is complied with and and if uh an ideal uh location is at the side of the house uh, which is where we agreed we put it, and we did agree to put it there, I and 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 the contractor that it wo- it wouldn't run into a a front setback issue. So um so that's just sort of a curiosity as I've tried to figure out, uh, you know, how this happened. But uh Andy, uh no, I mean, I agree to that location. Uh, but the w- with the understanding and knowledge that it was the rear of the home where we uh, where uh, where we would install a generator and propane tanks. Uh, and be- because there's no way it could go on the south side of the prop- uh, that the generator and propane tanks could be installed on the south side. No way they can be installed easily on the north side of the property. And so that le- uh, leaves the rear of the property for the propane tanks and the generator. And therefore
No, I I I understand that now that you've explained it.
Okay.
Uh, but I I still kind of wonder why he had a whole side to work on.
I'm sorry, Andy, I missed that. Why?
One, I was wondering why the contractor who had an entire side to work with chose to push it toward the front of the building.
Uh, well, the electrical panels right there, uh, that's 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 one consideration. And if you look at that side of the house um, and to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fast, I'm gonna fast forward to to some of the photos. So so this is the, this is the AC in its, in its uh, the heat pump AC in its current location, Andy. Um and and I if if you've looked at the application, I, what I did was I took a bunch of photos uh, in sequence, moving, you know, from across the street so to confirm that the, it's not visible from the street from various angles and from neighbors driveways to the south. And then uh, 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 moving to the south side and foundation of my house and then moving around to the rear of the house. So, you know, this is photo uh, four, uh, that's the tree.
Yeah, I think I see the answer already.
Yeah, and and exactly, Andy. So that's, that's the tree.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, I just saw an outline of your house. This doesn't conform to what I physically see in the picture. But what's in the picture would prevent him from sliding it more to the rear.
Oh, exactly, right. And 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 right here, as an example, by, you know, by, I mean, this is all root system, Andy. I mean, they're just roots stretching out from that beast. Uh, and the septic tank is also so, I mean, somehow or other, I have no idea. I mean, it was put in I, uh, thirty-five
Off the top of my head, I don't see a hardship, but I do see a practical difficulty.
Right.
Given the age of the building and the way the building has generated a footprint.
Okay.
Uh, let me ask this question. Did you provide uh, your contractor with a property survey that could have been taken to the building department with the application?
I I know, I mean, I signed the building application, uh, the the building permit application. I know that he um, uh, used the property card, I believe. I think he mentioned to me, Lee, that uh, it was the property card that he referenced and the diagram of the house on the property. that he referenced and the diagram of the house on the property card. I you know, I I'm stepping out of my area of expertise here because I've only dealt with one building permit in my life and that was for a shed. And it was very simple and very straightforward. So
What is your profession? What was your profession, sir?
I worked for IBM for thirty years, yeah.
Okay, in which capacity?
I was a strategist.
Got it. Okay.
So precisely what what Dominic Hop Energy submitted with a building application? I don't, I I don't know. I mean, it was their responsibility per the contract to obtain all building permits and I I I entrusted them to 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 provide what was necessary in order to obtain those since it since it was their contractual responsibility.
Because I will, I will tell you, I and it doesn't matter the age of the house. I always urge my clients to have a recent property survey. So it it ensures that you know what you have and where it is.
Right.
That's my comment. That's all.
Okay.
I I really don't think you need to go into any more explicit detail unless there are specific questions.
Okay.
On the board or that are brought up by members of the public. Because I think we see the, as Andy points out, more of a practical difficulty and we do look at historic structures, topography, significant trees and other encumbrances. That's within our purview. So I don't think you need to drive that point home much further.
Okay, then I if I if I'm interpreting your comments correctly, Lee, I'm not gonna take you through the rest of the presentation. But we'll we'll simply add that there are four letters of support. I I received, I think there were only three that were part of the application and a neighbor called a few days ago and said, Larry, is there anything I can do to help? I said, yeah. Another letter and so there are four letters expressing support for the application from neighbors that would be able to that theoretically based on the survey map might be able to see the the condenser.
Okay, Tammy, do we have those letters?
They were sent to us.
Okay, I didn't see them.
I can show them to you. I made them part of the presentation file also.
Danielle, if you would read them
Take care of that, please.
All right, I'll read them into the record. Oh, boy. Okay. So first one from Florence and Larry, if you would help me with her last name.
Paul Zappel.
Huzzell. She's at fifty two Chestnut Hill Road in Norwalk, Connecticut. To the members of the Norwalk Zoning Board of Appeals dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty four. I'm writing in support of the variance requested by my neighbor Larry Loceo that would allow him to install a heat pump slash A C condenser within the forty foot front setback of his house. I own and live in the house that's closest to the house of Larry's on the north side of his property. From my own house and yard, I can barely see the north side of his home and therefore have no view at all of the south side of his house where the condenser is located. I can also confirm that condenser isn't visible from the street. I have no issues at all with the location of the condenser and would like would respectfully ask that the board approve Larry's variance request. Okay, second letter is from Bob Yingling, who is He's at three forty two Chestnut Hill.
Bob's at three twenty eight, three twenty. Yep.
Got it. To the members of the Norwalk Zoning Board of Appeals, my wife Linda and I are neighbors of Larry Loceo and own and reside at the home located at three at three twenty eight Chestnut Hill Road. Our house is immediately south of Larry's and is the closest house to Larry's on the east side of the road. We are writing to support Larry's application for a variance permitting him to install a heat pump condenser within the forty foot front setback on his property. The condenser is not a nuisance in any way and we are unaware of its presence after installation despite the fact that we live in the home that is closest to the unit's location. Thank you for your consideration of our input on this matter. Respectfully, Linda and Bob Yingling. Then we have a letter from David Heckler. My name is David Heckler and my wife Debbie and I live at three forty six Chestnut Hill Road in Norwalk, Connecticut. We're neighbors of Larry Loceo and our driveway abuts the north side of Larry's property at three forty two Chestnut Hill Road. We'd like to express our full support for Larry's application for a variance allowing the installation of a heat pump slash A C condenser within the forty foot front setback on his property. We've driven past Larry's home often since its installation and can confirm that it both isn't visible from the road and that its presence in its current location is not objectional to us in any way. We can also see Larry's home from our driveway and are not able to see the heat pump slash A C condenser from that angle either. My wife and I moved to Norwalk seven years ago and Larry has been a welcoming friend and neighbor to us both. I'd like to add that when Larry reached out to me in the spring for information about our generator setup here at our home, he shared that due to health challenges with he's been dealing with for a number of years, he now needs to install both a central A C and a generator in order to stay in his home. It's our hope that this board grants Larry his this variance so he can continue living in an antique home we know he both loves and values as part of our town's history. And the last letter is from Dr. Susan Pennella and Mauro Pennella at three forty four Chestnut Hill Road. Um, me and my husband live at three forty four Chestnut Hill Road and thus are neighbors of Larry Loceo who is applying for a variance related to the installation of a heat pump condenser on the south side of his home. Even though our driveway is immediately adjacent to the south side of Larry's property and when we drive up and down our driveway multiple times during the course of the day, we've been completely unaware of the presence of the condenser. And as such, we can confirm that the condenser is no way, in no way a nuisance or for that matter even noticed by us. We therefore want to express our full support of the boards granting Larry the variance he is seeking. Respectfully, Dr. Susan Pennella. And Mauro.
Thank you, Danielle. Tammy, quick question. All the green cards are in your possession?
So I got the the proof of mailings and I also got a photo of the installed sign noticing the public hearing that was installed in in the time as required and still remains up.
Okay, very good. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this application?
Okay, guys, if you'd like to speak, just use the raise your hand feature and I will acknowledge you. Okay, we've got Robert Gross. Go ahead, Robert.
Yes, Robert Moss here, three two nine.
Dominica Schultz.
Dominica Schultz. We do support Larry here. Can't notice it at all.
We are a neighbor that is on the road of three two nine Chestnut Hill Road can see him from adjacent and we cannot see this um, unit whatsoever from our vantage point. We fully support their placement of this unit without question.
Hey, thank you very much. Tammy, anyone else with their hands raised?
No other raised hands.
Okay, does anyone wish to
Oh, sorry, sorry, someone just popped it.
Well, we've already heard from the Yingling in in terms of a letter. But we'll let him speak. They're they're on the call.
Okay, go ahead, Bob and Linda.
Larry's like, fuck yeah.
Hi, thank you. Yes, we 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 just wanted to reiterate that, you know, Larry's a great neighbor. This unit, as I as we said in the letter, was basically installed without even realizing it's there. I've helped Larry with, you know, setting up his sign, taking putting together his package and things like that. And the the unit I I I believe is in the best place it could possibly be in the location it is at the current time. So we just wanted to reaffirm our one hundred percent hope that you folks can come to a positive result for this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy, anyone else?
Any last chance, folks? No other raised hands.
Hey, do we have any questions from the board on this application?
I just have, I just have a question, Steve here. So this is pretty much, he got it done without permission and we're looking to look at the practicality of where it's located based on a tree and his support of his neighbors. They all get along well and looking for, you know, he's looking to have it stay where it's at and not move somewhere else, correct?
That's correct.
Just making sure, okay.
Well, so I'm sorry, Lee, for the record, I don't think we prompted for those in opposition.
Uh, do we have anyone in opposition that wishes to speak? Be signified by raising your hand.
Okay, no raised hands.
Okay. So Lozio, there's really nothing for you to rebut on this. So I will, unless there are any objections, close this part of the public hearing on this item.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and as we normally do, we work in reverse order of applications. So does anyone have any comments on three forty two Chestnut Hill Road?
Yeah, I do think it's a practical difficulty because not only the tree but the porch that sticks out on that side of the house. Which makes it very difficult to do anything along that remaining footage.
I agree. I also believe, I mean, we've got a house dating from the late eighteenth century. I know that we have granted variances on at least two other houses that the majority of the structure is in the front yard setback. So I have no difficulty in supporting this approval of this application, although the one thing I can be critical of is that the famous words, it's always easier to ask forgiveness than for approval. And I wish that your contractor had waited before installation to install the unit.
I do as well.
So I have no further comments. Anybody else on the board? Well, hearing none. The full board will all seated members will vote on this. So would somebody please make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion. This is Steve. I'll make a motion to approve and allow where it's currently standing for the reasons mentioned beforehand. And I truly believe that with with Larry's support of his neighbors and himself, anything that he does further on that property, he would definitely go to the the proper departments prior to making things done. And thank you, Tammy, and staff for supporting him throughout this. And I hope everything works well with you, Mr. Larry. That's my that's my motion.
Well, second.
Who seconded?
Me, Ben.
Okay. Uh, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approval of this application? Please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, this application is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving back to the first item on our agenda tonight. Item two four dash zero seven one eight dash zero one, the Norwalk Country Club Company Shore and Country Club Incorporated. Discussion.
Yeah, I I have a comment, which is that the situation we have around what we can cannot give variances for seems to be pretty pertinent for this application with the impervious surface area. I don't really know how we want to like move forward with that, but figured something we all ought to talk about.
Well, we could. After my little love note, we were told that there'll be an effort to move forward to have a discussion with the key players in planning and zoning and attorneys of the city. And in the meantime, we have to wing it.
Well, I, you know, I hate to bring it up, but we could recommend that a required portion of the parking lot be done in gravel, which would be impervious. However, it is a pain to maintain. And it raises dust. I think that that would be problematic not only for this facility but for adjoining property owners. So I'm hesitant to even suggest it.
More about the pervious or permeable surface for the pickleball court. And see what other products are out there and get back to planning and zoning that they did the research and they couldn't find one. Rather than just assume that it doesn't exist.
I mean, the deviation in permeable surface from the requirement of the regulations is like a lot.
I was gonna say the same thing.
So that it feels like to approve it with that kind of deviation is like a really strange precedent.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if it was five percent, that'd be one thing, but fifty percent is a whole other thing.
Yeah, and the bar that we're now supposed to address variants for permeability permeability is in something that's settled yet. So
Right.
We're kind of hamstrung unless we wanted to, as I say, take a flyer, but I don't think we want to take a flyer on something that gets approval for something way out of bounds.
My instinct would be to say that because it's an existing condition and they're actually going in the right direction, they're decreasing the impervious surface a little bit that like you know, la- last month, we we wouldn't have even have needed to get into a whole discussion. We would have said, you know, fine, I I would imagine.
They're putting down quite a bit of new asphalt in all of that parking reorganization. So it's not you know, they are reconfiguring the site in the master plan quite a bit.
So do you want staff comment or no?
I didn't understand you, Tammy. Say it again.
Sorry, did you want any staff comment or you prefer not?
Well, I I do, yeah. Come on, Stan.
Always respect your opinion, Tammy.
Well, so I would just, you know, and speak, so I don't even think the applicants are aware that the concern was raised. Is it, is it really? I'm trying to choose my words very carefully here. It came into question about this regulation, the new regulation prohibiting certain types of variances. So that's up for future and and hopefully very immediate addressing. However, my staff memo notes that it is actually a reduction in the impervious surface. In some respects, it could be argued that it's an existing nonconformity. Yeah, they're switching one area for another, but it results in actually a a small reduction. I don't want to, you know, I I'm the champion of the regulations, but sometimes interpretation
We could also say that we'd like to see a larger reduction. But yeah, we do have, we are between a rock and a hard place when it comes to the administrative side of this. But on the in the normal purview that But on the, in the normal purview that we would have exercised judgment. Uh, I still think that I, I could vote yes. I think there needs to be a bigger effort to, uh, increase permeability.
I would also ask Tammy, what are you seeing on new projects that are meeting the twenty-five percent but have large surface lots? What, what kind of products are we using here?
Danielle, they're not needing them and they're having to flop out asphalt for. Uh, gravel typically, it's typically, it's, it's in single family homes and they're proposing to switch out. Asphalt drives, driveways to gravel, but I will also note, staff intends to initiate. We're, we've got a running list of many of the challenges, um, with the adoption of the new regulations and, and trying to. Apply those and we're finding the, the, uh, impervious surface area is too stringent. Um, we're looking at different options. We, we won't have any, we're, we're still, staff is still working on. Proposed text amendment and we hope to have that published and in front of the board shortly after Labor Day. So we, we are hopeful some standards will become. Now, I don't, I'm not going to say that that would apply to this case. I would, I would just note, as I did in the staff memo, this is a, a non-traditional use. Or not non-traditional, let's just say, is an unusual use that is designated and lies within a residential zone.
The magnitude of this is what's bugging me and I don't want to go out on a limb to approve it.
No, and I, I'm gonna follow up that question with, okay, so this is a use that doesn't typically apply within this district. But if it was an allowable use. Or in different districts, it has different percentage requirements, right?
Well, I mean. I don't know, but I wouldn't, I would say, you know, we have other waterfront clubs, a, a, a couple or three, I think. And they, they are in residential zones. They were in residential zones. They remain in residential zones, you know? Should they have been under a separate zone? That's another, you know, uh, probably case to make. Then you had something, I, I totally missed what you said.
Yeah, sorry. A bunch of us talked at once. Um, in, in general, the, the residential zones are the ones that have pretty strict. Impervious surface regulations compared to the other zones.
Right, so for this, yeah, so in commercial zones, it's much higher. I think it's ninety percent in some zones. Yeah, um, but, uh, residential, if you're, if you're, so say. Say you have a home in one L and it's, I think the same for one, um. If your lot size is twenty thousand square feet, you're restricted to twenty-five percent total impervious coverage, only one quarter. That includes. Patios, uh, sheds, uh. The house, uh, covered porch, uh, gazebo, it would exclude only pools. And then any, um, you know, gravel area.
Yeah, but I, I don't think. Saying the club is a commercial zone. Is in any way, shape or form, it's appropriate. It's like a park where we haven't provided in the code, um, something specific for this type of organization. Um, and I again, think it's closer to a park that would have a clubhouse. Um, other facilities that, uh, make the property useful to the club. But at the same time, they're not trying to build out, um. A business center with lots and lots of parking and lots and lots of floors. I mean, that's just not what we're dealing with here. But I think they should go back and, and we could tell them that we would, uh, rehear them without a six month wait. And they should make a second effort at reducing, uh, um, impermeability.
You wouldn't want to just continue it? For new plans or?
I don't, I don't know. They, the, yeah, it seems to me that, that we should.
Oh, that's right. We can't continue. We closed the public hearing. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So I would say that, that we should just deny it and then give them the opportunity to work around that. Without, I don't want to be harsh about this. It just doesn't seem that they've met what we need.
Well, I, I. Feel that they've taken a good first step. I mean, reorganizing the parking and bringing in more landscaping. Is a great first step, but I think that. They have to. Prove to us that they make a legitimate. Effort in terms of reducing, uh, non-permeability in the parking lot. So, uh.
Or tennis courts.
I will make a motion that we deny this application, uh, on the basis of. The need to reduce. Non-permeable, uh, coverage on this site. And I would welcome them back, uh, when they. Rethink this.
Do you want to deny without prejudice?
There's a magic phrase that we've got to include.
Deny it without prejudice.
No, yeah, right. Right. No prejudice.
I just have a question regarding conditions. Um, if it was approved with conditions, is that an, another option or no?
I don't think we want to proceed with approving anything. With conditions. Because it, if, to us, it would be. Open, so open-ended with. Outgetting into very specific. Uh, design details and, and we are not able to come up with. Uh, a material or a method that might solve it. That's not our job, so.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
Can I just interject? What about, I don't think we really addressed the EV chargers or the story, uh, variance, uh. Portion of.
It's only, to me, the permeability issue is the only issue.
I agree with Andy, the only. The, the permeability, site permeability is the only one. Chargers and. The height is all predicated on the existing foot point elevation.
So is it appropriate to approve some and not of, not other, or how do you?
Well, I would, I, on my part, I would be willing to approve. Everything except.
That's what I was recommending, Lee, earlier, approving with conditions.
Okay. And, and just exclude, specifically exclude. Uh, any approval of. The parking and permeability on the site. Uh, we can give them the encouragement.
Don't leave out the tennis courts.
And, and I, and I only say that, Lee.
Yes.
The approval with conditions, because when it comes to building structures, there's timeframes throughout, throughout the year. Some things are. Uh, good to do in September, some things you can't do till, uh, January, February, the following year, so I just, I don't want to hold up the schedule based off. All these things.
I would.
Because, because their downtime for a club, their downtime, as you mentioned. Uh, you know, it's April to August, September, so sometimes they like to get things done during their off season. I'm just thinking just from. Me, being at clubs in the past, you know, sometimes they have schedule.
I agree with you, Steve. There, there are appropriate times of the year. Uh, to build and, you know, certainly the. Off-season work.
It's just my thought.
Could well be done.
Well, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Danielle. Well, we, given your expertise, do you think if they have permeability? Issues that they need to solve, that that would spill over into the other areas of approval?
I don't, I don't think it has to, and I agree with you. I, I don't have any issues with the other variances.
Yeah, okay. I agree with, uh, with Danielle. I don't see any reason, because the site work will always be the last thing done on a project. You know, after they lay the asphalt, they strike the paving, the contractor is out of there. So as far as I'm concerned. Everything could be built. As they've proposed it this evening, with the exception of the tennis court. Courts and the parking. Oh, I have no problem with the boathouse or the, uh. Tennis facility. You know, and let that go ahead in terms of, uh, construction drawings and bidding. And, uh. Uh, let that go ahead while they work out, uh, site permeability.
I think, um, you know, they also mentioned the drainage study and the onsite retention. I think. You know, with the permeability, it may be helpful to understand. You know, a little bit about more that since system is, how much water are you really retaining onsite treating and then, and then releasing? How is that working as a whole, as part of the permeability story? I think would be helpful to revisit.
Well, I'm sure that, uh, you know. DPW engineering, you know, has gone through all those calculations, so. Uh. You know, Land Tech is, is very thorough on that, so I'm not going to question. What they're doing. Uh, this obviously, uh. Has to go to conservation and to P and Z, uh, but I think that we could. Question that as part of the permeability study.
Okay. So, Tammy, we don't normally bifurcate things or, I don't, besides by, multiply. It's not what we usually do. If we do that in this instance. Do we have an issue legally? That you're aware of?
I'm not sure. I don't think so. I think you could deny one. I mean, I, I feel like there's been, I'm not certain, but I feel like.
The applicant is, is trying to do all of this together as like the first phase of their master plan. We are essentially. Splitting this phase in half for them, saying, you know, if we approve the buildings, you can go to the buildings. The rest of it, you've got to hold on and go back to the drawing board and, and come back to us.
I mean, not necessarily. This is like one month.
Um, I am sure that, uh, they and Land Tech will, will jump on this. To move it forward for the club. You know, it's not something that's going to sit on, on somebody's desk for two or three months. I think they're going to come up with answers that hopefully will satisfy us and other. Uh, you know, departments.
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate, uh, and I, I don't want to be, beat a dead horse here, but, you know, the coverage. Was already with the parking lots and the existing tennis courts, and then I think adding the, what was it, the patio and walk? It was at seventy-five and a half. And so they're swapping areas. Yeah, they're gonna dig it up, all that. Um, but it's really, it's not like it's expanding beyond the original borders, I guess is the way to say it. That's just my.
Well, they're making, they're making major changes and I think it's okay to ask them to go back and. Figure out how to reduce, um, impermeability. So I'm willing to. Approve a motion that includes everything except. The, um, paving and the tennis courts.
Andy, if you would make a motion, because you're, you're so eloquent at doing that.
Um, anybody else want to step in? Because I'll do it. I, I move that we approve. This application in all aspects, except those for services. That would include all paving and tennis courts. And that, uh, they want to readdress that, that's great and, um, we're not going to hold them. To having to give us another fee or wait six months.
I'll second that. Comments? Okay, let's take a vote on, uh. Uh, Andy's motion. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Leave it unanimous. All five s- s- sitting members tonight have approved this.
Yeah, we still have more business ahead of us.
Yes, I know we do.
I would just, we have guests and they probably don't want to hang around for all the rest of stuff.
Okay, under administrative acts, actions. We have a request by, um. The owners of, uh, twenty-three Westmere Avenue. Uh, variance twenty-three dash one, two, two, one, dash zero, three. To, uh, with my paperwork. There's someplace. To, uh, extend. Uh. The, uh. Timeframe. Uh, for, uh, completing, uh, the variance work on, uh, Bell Island. I don't have a problem with this item. Any comment from other board members?
No, I saw the schedule and the schedule is reasonable.
I think it is. Uh, do we give them, um. Three months extension?
Sure.
Okay, I propose, uh, we extend a three-month extension. For the variance granted for item two, three, one, two, two, one, dash zero, three. Anyone like to second that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying yea- yay and raise your hand.
Yes, yep, yep.
Yes.
Okay, you, again, unanimous, unanimously approved. On that, and then we move on.
Thank you. I mean, let me make a comment. Um, we only had five board members here tonight. Um, and each of those five sat on, uh, all the applications.
Yes. That's why I took roll.
Yep.
And, uh. Mentioned that the full seated board was in approval. Okay. We now move on to the meeting minutes. From our July eighteenth meeting. I hope everyone has read through them. Does anyone have any corrections or comments?
I've already made mine.
Okay.
I don't know how to correct it.
I don't either.
Tammy, do you have a record of who voted on what? Application by?
Uh, I do, yeah. No, I can go back and check, but I thought that wasn't included in the minutes. We didn't have that.
No, there's times it'll say this person, uh, made the motion, this person seconded and then, um, unanimous approval. Well, if you have more than five people there then, uh, who are acting, it's like we stick somebody in and take somebody out. Then you don't know who it was and we are obligated under the friendly statutes that we want to talk to our brethren about. To, uh, identify who's on, uh, each of those.
Oh, yeah, so they just noted that Ms. Olson served as a bystander. Okay, that's.
Since I want to rely on the statutes to, uh, make my point, I guess we should follow them.
Your point is very well taken, Andy.
Can I make a side note? Can I make a side note?
Of course.
It's, it's kind of funny, right? Um, I'm, I'm saying to myself, there's not five commissioners here, because I'm looking at four faces, but I gotta include myself.
No, we have all five, Steve.
I'm like, I only see four in front of me with Tammy and I'm like, what's going on here? All right, you're right.
That, that kind of screws things up, Steve.
It's a mental note. It's like, man, talk about aging.
That's telling you that it's late at night.
It's long day.
Do, can we do, approve the minutes with the noted changes?
Yeah, if you would see that those identifications are made, I'm happy.
Okay, I move that we accept the minutes with the addition of. Uh, the call out on who voted on each ish, uh, each application.
Superduper.
For this and all future. Applications.
You know, when we do the minutes, we say application X, Y, Z. And we had a vote, this person, um, put it forward, this person seconded it, and then we voted and these. One, two, three, four, five voted yes and. one, two, three, four, five voted yes, and whoever else voted no, and whoever else abstained. Because there's actually three categories. And we need to make that clear for each and every single application.
All of these are recorded and live somewhere forever.
Somewhere record land.
The cloud.
But like if, if previous variances were on a property and sometimes we get the minutes attached, like we would still only get the minutes attached, right?
I don't know what you mean.
Sometimes I've seen on some of these applications, like from old variances, like the minutes will be attached. So that would be like the same thing we would get in a future packet, right? Even if it references something that was fully recorded.
Yeah, it's true.
We should. I remember seeing stuff that was done 30, 40 years ago.
Yeah, which
And they did identify who was there and who was seated that night and how they voted.
I will endeavor to be much better about it as we proceed.
Superduper. All set.
Okay, have we approved the minutes?
We had you motioned. We need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
From the July 8th. Aye.
I was not here in July, so I'll abstain.
That's fine, Ben.
Four ayes, one abstention. See, we're getting good at this already.
Does anyone else have any other comments to make? For a call for an adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Danielle. This meeting of the zoning board of
See everybody. It was good to meet with you tonight. Take care.
Okay.
Thank you.
See you in September.
Be well. Bye.
Bye bye.